Good morning and welcome to the June 27th County Commission Meeting. Please stand for the flag. Again, good morning and just a reminder of just silence your cell phones and meeting documents are available for review next to Commissioner Bender. If you need a listening device, Carol can help you with that. Just a quick note, there on the original agenda, there was a meeting this morning supposed to happen with Dell's but that had to be canceled. So that will be rescheduled at a later date. And we'd like to welcome Judy here this morning to help us as State's Attorney with Kirsten's retirement, so to speak, from our area, but we're happy that you're here. So thank you for your service. With that, we'll go to routine business. First item is to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item two is to approve the commission minutes from June 20th.
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item three is bills to be paid of $1,876,486.13.
Pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay those bills. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Barth.
There are some other remarkable bills, but again, this week, there are some considerable bills for outside attorneys and the courts. And I think it's only $15,000, but they're probably divided between 16 different entities.
Okay. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second to approve the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Reports. Item A is a county highway construction project report for June. Item B is the County Juvenile Detention Center annual report for 2016, and those are filed in the administrative office. Item five is personnel actions. Consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning.
Have any comments?
Not on the routine, no.
Not yet.
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve routine personnel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item B is, excuse me, special commission action to approve a temporary pay increase of approximately 5% for Judy Warecamp, Senior Deputy State's Attorney for the State's Attorney's Office. Would you like to vote on that, Judy?
(laughing) No, thank you.
This one is familiar to you. You saw one last week. They don't happen that often over the course of time, but we're requesting a 5% increase due to the additional responsibilities Judy will be assuming temporarily.
Excellent. Is there any comments or questions or a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the temporary pay increase. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item six, applications for abatement. There aren't any, no notices or requests, no planning and zoning notices or petitions for compromise. Now would be the time for opportunity for public comment if there's anyone that would like to make comments about something that's not on the agenda.
I was hoping to address you about your own report.
I'm sorry. You've got to be quick this morning.
I'm sorry.[254.84][254.84](laughing)
Come on up, Jason. My apology.
Jamie Gravitt, Director of the Juvenile Detention Center. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about why I gave you the specific information that I did, what we're seeing and why we are seeing those things, and how it's kind of affecting some of the kids that we have in our facility, and answer any questions that you had. First off, the specifics of the report that I included, those go along with the eight core principles of JDAI that we're trying to follow. So we're looking at sex, age, race of the kids, at the decision points made throughout the judicial process that they go through. The one that's probably the most alarming that we see is we continue to have disproportionate contact with mainly Native Americans that are out of line. So we're going to continue to examine those and try to figure out what's causing that. And we're working with our racial and ethnic fairness person that we contract through LSS to try and come up with solutions to that. The ray that we do use has been validated showing that we don't have any biases in our decision-making, but we're still finding that we're having more contact. The bed days that you see in this report are up a little from 2015, but 2017's even higher right now. So in 2016 compared to 2015, we had, it was, I believe, 131 less admits, but we had 2,233 more bed days. And the reason that's going on is we're having more youth that are direct filed into adult court. The Department of Corrections facilities are full, and we have longer wait times for kids to get there. I did meet with the Department of Corrections last week to find out how that can be changed. They reminded me of an RFP process that they did, I think it was in September or October of last year, and they're hoping to make an announcement within a month of a new facility that they're going to start utilizing to try and get kids moving through faster. So hopefully, some good news on that will be coming. As far as 2016 to 2017 through May, 2016, at this time last year, we were averaging about 18.45 kids a day. Through May, this year, we're averaging 30.1. How it's affecting some of the kids is that with those longer stays and a lot of the unknowns on those DOC kids, we're seeing a little more emotional problems that, you know, they're just lost. They don't know what's going to happen, what's going on. We do have QMHP services to help us with that, and our staff are very professional and help them through those situations as well.
Jamie, if you're seeing almost a double in numbers, have we dug down in to find out what those reasons are?
It's the longer bed days or the longer length of stay on those adult cases, mainly, and some of the DOC waits.
Okay.
We just had another youth admitted last night on a first degree burglary that will be a direct file.
Okay.
Commissioner Bender?
Can you explain about what makes the difference about adult file? And then can you break down how many of those bed days would be the state? They should be eligible for transfer to a state facility, but because there are delays on the state's part, we're ending up with them in our facility?
On the first part of the question, you were asking about direct file. The reason that they take longer is there's a lot of decisions that have to be made throughout the process, a lot of evaluations. They usually petition to come back to juvenile court, so then everybody has to prepare for those hearings. A lot of times, we won't see those hearings for six months. We've had one youth that was there over a year before he had that hearing.
So as a follow-up to that, so the initial decision is a decision made by the State's Attorney's Office?
They don't have the opportunity, the law says that they shall direct file on those cases, like burglary first, murder, manslaughter, rape first degree.
That's what I was looking for. Thanks.
Yeah.
So then the second part of that?
I don't have that information. I can dig deeper in our stats to try and determine that, as far as how many extra bed days the kids are staying because facilities are full.
I think that would be helpful to know. Thank you.
One of the answers that they did give me was they weren't anticipating as many sex offenders that they had, that they've been receiving. And where they're finding trouble with some of the placements that they use is that they also contract with out-of-state entities. There's only a couple of facilities that are South Dakota-only kids. So then what happens when those facilities get full, they start looking out-of-state for replacement of those kids.
But the state does not reimburse us our charges, our costs?
They do.
They do? So that we're being reimbursed?
They reimburse us a daily rate that is higher than for our partners.
Okay.
Commissioner Kersky?
You use the term "direct file." Can you?
Yes, I'm sorry. There's certain crimes, the higher-risk crimes, like I talked about, the murder, manslaughter, rape first, burglary first. According to South Dakota law, if a juvenile is 16 years or older, and they are accused of one of those crimes, it shall be direct filed into adult court. So then the State's Attorney has to do evaluations. Usually, the defense attorney will have evaluations done, and that draws out the time that they're waiting to actually have a hearing to determine whether it stays in adult court, comes back to juvenile court. Once that's decided, then they have the rest of the process to take care of as well.
Okay. Have there been any changes to state statutes that would cause, you know, drive numbers up, like how one crime is now a more serious offense where before it wasn't at that level?
Not that I'm aware of at this time.
Question I would have, Jimmy, is there an explanation of why the out-of-county participants are twice as long as the county participants? If you look at the admissions, average length of stay is 15.23 days. Minnehaha County's 8.4. So that means that the people outside of the county are here longer?
Well, that also includes those Department of Corrections stays.
Okay.
So it's anybody else that uses the facility, not just our partner counties. Our partner counties are actually pretty quick at getting kids back into court. But another issue that other counties have compared to Minnehaha is Minnehaha has juvenile court every day of the week. A lot of the smaller counties will have it either once a week or once every other week. So that extends some of their stays.
Sure.
For the most part, they're pretty good about getting them back into court pretty quick.
Okay. Commissioner Heiburger?
Jamie, are we seeing very many overrides on our risk assessment instrument in the last year?
We have, we're staying close to what we've been averaging. We're up just a tick. I'd say it's around 16%, 17% right now. Ideally, we'd like to be down to 12%. So we're still working on what's causing that.
Okay.
One of the fixes that we've already accomplished this year was we were doing a lot of overrides for warrants, and that was a matter of helping educate the judicial area and working with the State's Attorney on that. And it just came down to asking for a specific warrant versus just asking for a warrant.
Okay.
Is there statistics about if we see these people as youngsters or juveniles, obviously, how many times do we see them again down the road? Because are they frankly frequent flyers of people that we're going to have to work with?
I don't have that information available right now. I could try to find that out.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I think Erin would have kind of an idea about that. I don't know specifically are our kids, but nationwide, as far as what kids who enter in the system as a first-time offense and don't ever come back, but those who are frequent. I think Erin probably would have some of that information nationally. I don't know if she has it locally.
I will be in contact with her, though, and let you know what I find out.
I guess the question would be is if there's an alternative rehab program or whatever that either we're not using or not aware of, of the fact that if we can get them into a different route rather than continually seeing them even in the penitentiary or wherever that unfortunately would happen, if there's a way to prevent some of that activity, I think we have to look at that.
Correct. And the state is constantly expanding their community options that are paid for through, like maybe probation or DOC. They've started a MRT group, an ART group, and functional family therapy. ART stands for aggression replacement therapy. MRT is moral recognition therapy, or it's kind of a, I don't like using the term corrective thinking because that, but it's similar, but it's a lot more intense and a lot more cognitive behavioral.
Commissioner Heiburger?
And a couple of other things we're using is we use our supervised, you know, home detention, and so we've gotten kids out that normally we would have kept in, and they're now out on home detention. And our evening report center, where kids who have been in trouble but need supervision to keep them off, out of trouble, we assign them to, or the judge does, assign them to evening report center, just to keep them in a controlled setting during the times when they're going to be in trouble until their parents get home. And so those have been helping us over the last five years.
And then example of that is today, right now, we have 30 juveniles in the detention center, 13 in shelter care and nine on community supervision. So if it wasn't for the shelter care and community supervision, those 22 kids would be in JDC. So, I mean, there's a lot of community resources that are being attempted to help these kids, not only pre-trial, but post-adjudication as well.
Yeah, I'm not trying to say that we're not doing anything. What I'm looking for is opportunities to enhance, excuse me, enhance that.
Yeah, not only enhance that, but I think we need to try and find the numbers to see if these community resources are really making the difference on preventing them from going further down the line like you talked about.
Yep. Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Chairman, that was an excellent question you had there, and I've seen some numbers on it. I don't recall exactly, but when a kid actually goes to secure detention, that is a big indicator of future trouble. So that's why having other alternatives to secure detention is probably the best way to divert people from a worse path. But I did want to ask a couple of questions. And one is, the state does not have enough room for their juveniles at this point, and they're going to open a new location?
They're working with someone to open one in South Dakota. They have places, they're trying to keep the kids in South Dakota as much as they can. The placements that they utilize in South Dakota are running at capacity. We're running into being told that some of these placements might not have a bed till September.
Oh, we used to have Plankington, and then we had Custer. Those things are shut down, right?
Those are shut down. There are no state-run facilities. They use all private facilities.
Wow.
Other questions?
One more question, I guess.
Certainly.
So with the DOC kids that we hold, are we losing money on holding them, or are we breaking even as far as the daily cost?
We're breaking even.
Okay. Thanks.
In fact, we're breaking even on all our beds at this point now. In the past, we were actually subsidizing counties and other, but now we're breaking even, and we're not losing any money on beds.
Thank you.
Other questions? Please continue if you have other.
No, I believe that pretty much wraps it up, because I just wanted to give you the specifics of what we looked at, what we're doing, and what we're seeing, and why, and answer your questions. So thank you for your time.
No, thank you, and I apologize for going too fast, obviously.
Have a great day.
Thank you. Item number 10 is a public hearing to consider an application for a special event on sale liquor license for Nelson Landing, Inc., doing business as Falls Landing at the Blue Haven Barn and Gardens. Olivia?
Yes, we received an application from Nelson Landing, Inc. They will be providing liquor at a wedding at the Blue Haven Barn and Gardens on July 15, 2017. We have received no concerns or objections from the Sheriff's Department, State's Attorney's Office, or Planning and Zoning Department. So I would recommend approval for their special event on sale liquor license.
Make a motion to approve that special.
This is a public hearing, so we'll need, and I'm sure there's nobody here, but we have to save that at least.
We have a full room here.
Yeah, with mostly familiar faces. Anybody like to make any comments from the public, either for or against the special event liquor license? Mr. Barth, go ahead.
I renew my motion to approve this license.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the special event liquor license for Nelson Landing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item 11 is to consider a motion to approve and consume and blend alcohol beverage license for an event at the Mary Jo Wagner Arbitral. I can't talk today. I was on vacation too long. Mary Jo Wagner Event.[1180.82][1180.82](laughing)
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry.[1184.44][1184.44](laughing) Too long of a day yesterday. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item 12, I will try to read. Authorize chair to sign various property transaction documents relating to South Dakota 100 reconstruction project convey 1.3, I'm guessing that's acres, to the state of South Dakota. Lots H3, H4, H5, and H6 located within Lot R1 and Government Lot 2 of the southwest corner of Section 30 Township 102 North, Range 48 West of the 5th PM Minnehaha County, South Dakota. I made it, DJ.
That it? Commissioner Penega? Commissioners, DJ Booth, the Highway Superintendent, there's a packet of documents that the DOT has sent us, all relating to real estate transactions with the South Dakota 100 project. And Jason's scrolling through the documents there. We've reviewed the set of documents. Basically, what it is doing, it's taking 1.3 acres of the Minnehaha County parcel that is on the southeast corner of the I-90 and Timberline Road interchange. They're taking 1.3 acres to use for right-of-way for the South Dakota 100 project. And then they're giving us 1.72 acres of property that abuts our existing property to the south, and that will give us frontage on Redwood Boulevard. And so in exchange there, there's also a temporary easement form that we have to acknowledge and allow them temporary access to our property. And with the appraisals that they got and the property transfers that they're proposing, there's a difference in value of $3,584 that they're proposing to deliver or give to the county upon receipt of these signed documents. We are proposing to keep this property as a Minnehaha County property in the future, and the Highway Department would like to use this for stockpile location until the Commissioner or another department wants to use it. More than likely would resell it when there's some development activity in that area. Highway doesn't have any ownership interest in this property. We've just been users of the property since we've had it, and it was acquired through a tax deed. And so I would recommend that the deposit of the $3,584 gets put into the general fund since Highway doesn't have really any ownership or history with this property. So with that, I can answer any questions about the property or request a motion to execute all the right-of-way documents.
Commissioner Barth?
We'll make the motion for discussion purposes, but I do have a question.
Is there a second? Okay.
So DJ, on the southeast corner of the Highway 100 there, they're going to take part of it, not all of it, right?
Correct. Yeah, they are taking 1.3 acres of the existing county parcel.
And how much does that leave with us, then?
I was trying to look that up as we were sitting here waiting, and I didn't quite get to it. I think that we're about nine acres right now, so probably just over seven acres.
Great. Could be valuable property also someday.
However, then they are giving us 1.72 acres, and so our nine acres will ultimately end up being just under 10 acres likely.
Commissioner Heiburger?
If I remember correctly, with doing that swap, we're actually going to gain access where we didn't really have access before?
Right, to Redwood Boulevard.
Correct.
Yes, which is the road that will abut the south end of the property.
Well, the good news is if we get to $3,500, we're only $7,900 and some odd dollars short of a budget balance.
That is such a happy thought.
Isn't that a happy thought?[1442.12][1442.12](laughing) Go ahead.
Does it need to be part of the motion that we include that that money goes to the general fund?
That'd be a good idea.
I include that if that's all right with my second.
And I second it.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, DJ.
Thank you.
Item 13, is to consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign a revised contract with Coke Hazard Architects for the museum collection storage building. Mr. Hoskins?
Good morning, Commissioners. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Suland Heritage Museums. This revised contract actually came about through a building committee meeting where we were talking about estimates for the collection storage building, and I'm not sure who it was. Maybe it was Jeff, made a comment of, can you help us out by maybe reducing your fees? Well, Keith Thompson took that to heart and brought back this revised contract, which actually lowers their fees from 6.25% of construction to 5.25%, which will save us, depending on where bids come in, between $15,000 and $20,000.
Pretty good. Other questions for Mr. Hoskins? Just reminding people that at 5:00 today, we have a joint city-county meeting to approve this also as a joint entity. But we do need to approve this now.
Make a motion to approve this revised contract.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the revised contract with Coke Hazard. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item 14 is to consider a motion to declare a surplus property at 908 West Avenue North, the legal description of lots 1 to 5 and 25 and 26, Block 52, airport addition to the city of Sioux Falls, record ID 24678. Carol?
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commissioned Administrative Officer. At the last building meeting, the direction was from the Commission that we should declare 908 to be a surplus building so that we're able to sell that. Minnehaha County purchased the building at 908 West Avenue North in 1997 for the purpose of providing non-shelter care for youth, non-secure shelter care for youth. For 19 years, the county had an arrangement with Volunteers of America for these services within the facility. In early 2016, VOA, or Volunteers of America, no longer provided that shelter care service. So the building has been sitting empty since then and does not meet current or anticipated facility needs of the county in the future. Declaring the building as surplus is the first step in the county being able to sell the building. Attached is a resolution that would declare the property as surplus property and authorize an appraisal. The resolution gives staff and commission the option of acquiring the appraisal either through a three-member county appraisal board or retaining a licensed private commercial appraiser. The resolution also states that the method of sale will be determined by the commission after the appraisal is received. Do you want me to read the entire resolution? You did such a good job, Commissioner, on reading the legal description.
I'm still stuck on Mary Jo's arboretum.[1661.01][1661.01](laughing) I don't think we need to have the resolution read. We have a written document. We've all been able to read it beforehand. Does anybody have any questions about the resolutions or the reason for doing this? I think of one of the topics of conversation from the USD study was to sell this building and do some remodeling with this facility, which would mean that we would not have to build any other new structures if we were able to sell that for its appraised value. So.
We discussed this last week at the building committee meeting as well, so I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Carol. Item 15, County Commission Liaison Reports. Any reports? Commissioner Heiburger?
I actually have a couple. The first one I brought to your attention was an email, or not, a memo that you got from the Office or from Diane Rickema about Zillow. And they've asked Diane to come down and talk about it a little bit. They have requested to have a copy of our property, and there's a fee charge for it. And Diane and I had a short conversation about maybe we need to readdress the amount of money that, or the fee that we charge outside agencies when they come in and ask for all the property that we have. So Diane, maybe you want to address a little bit better than I did, and we can have a conversation about this later if the Commission so desires.
Good morning, Commissioners. Diane Rickma, Equalization Office. As Commissioner Heiburger stated, we do have a set rate for parcels requests. Basically, this is the amount of time in which it takes. That's how it was set up. So there is a $500 fee charge, and this is basically for the amount of time that it takes IT to get the information together.
Anyone have any questions? My question when I talked to Commissioner Heiburger about this, do you have a date on the last time those fees have been adjusted? How long has it been since those have been changed?
I do not. It's been that way for quite some years, I would guess. It's been that way for quite some years, I would guess.
I'm positive our costs have gone up. I think we need to have some idea of maybe how long that was to help us adjust those.
I can get with IT and ask them what they think, how much time is involved. Because like I said, they do most of the work, so.
The other thought was that it, we have a lot of work just in the staff and the equalizations office to put all that stuff together. And so I don't know if we want to recoup just the cost of, of what it costs IT to make it available, but do we want to recoup some of the costs that it's costing us to even have the information? I don't know. But I think it's a good conversation that maybe we should put it on as an agenda item, but.
Commissioner Bender?
Do you have any idea what your counterparts do in other counties in regard to this?
Lincoln County was asked the same thing. They give them all their information for free.
Well, that clearly is a subsidy to Zillow.
I'm curious, like, and it'd be interesting if you're gathering other information. I'd be curious to know what some bigger markets do.
Yeah, that I don't know.
Omaha, Lincoln.
I can check on that.
And she comes sprinting up. Any other questions? Julie, do you have some comments?
I was just watching the commission meeting from my office. And when this came up, and I didn't hear what was said in the thirty seconds that it took me to get up here, but our public records really, Zillow has been getting quite a good deal for a long time. There are thousands of records through equalization. But that essentially is a, a compilation that has taken us quite an extensive period of time and a lot of labor hours to put in that we're really not getting back. And so I met, well, with Kyle before he retired. And I think Diane and I kind of visited briefly quite a long time ago about it. But the bulk sales companies, that's what they do is they, they actually amass records. And then they own those and they're able to distribute them or, or assimilate information and make their own lists and that kind of thing, which is, which is certainly fine. It is public record. But I, I really would like you to take into consideration the amount of time that it took for labor costs, getting those records recorded, entered in, reviewed, given, and it really starts to mount up. So I would just ask you to kind of take, step back and just take a look and maybe take some time to assess really what would be a, a realistic amount that they really should be paying for that large of a database.
Well, your thirty-second sprint, which is pretty impressive, actually. We talked about finding out how long it's been since we've raised the fees and, and how we compare to other entities. So I think that's the.
And I will say that that's oftentimes the request that's done from bulk sales companies is they seem to think that it only takes a matter of pushing a button and the data is available. And so the only cost that's involved is just simply in that end result. So thank you so much for reassessing that.
Well, thanks. Commissioner Kersky?
You know, when I, I look at this and I think about the fact that these are public records and, you know, if I want to look up my own home, my own property, whatever, I can come down here and it's, it's free. I mean, it's, it's easy to do. And that's the way it, it should be. If I want to appeal my assessment, my taxes, that type of thing, you know, compared, some comparables. But when it comes to, like, as you're saying, people that gather this data and then basically resell it or make money off of it, I don't think that it should be free. It's still a public record, but there is time and effort involved. And it's more than just a service to a citizen or to a taxpayer. It's being resold for the most part. So there, we should be charging an equitable amount for that service.
Right, and I appreciate that comment. And I would just, there's also the continuing maintenance cost that goes along with maintaining those records, and that's not free. I mean, that, that can be a very costly expense as well.
I think we have some directive, Diane, if that's, if you could bring that back to us when you're able to gather that information. I think we'd take a second, harder look at it and probably pass on it for right now.
Chairman, I'm not Julie's liaison, but she's had some remodeling and I wonder if she would comment on that.
We have, we have some very, very nice security windows in at our office. We don't have, it's not completed quite yet as far as the blinds are concerned, but they are wonderful. We've had a lot of very positive comments about them. And so we're very, very pleased with the end result. And appreciate all the time and effort and your support in getting that established. And so thank you so much from our whole office and from many members of the public. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hybarger, do you have another item?
Yep, I have another item. I sit on the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Board of Directors. And we had a conference call yesterday talking about the new Senate bill or House Bill eleven eighty-three, which is the competency in mental health bill. If you remember, I also sit on the Oversight Committee that will be watching over that bill and its implementation. But the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners will be in charge of the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that will be coming from Department of Social Services for the competency evaluations. Prior to this bill, the HSC would do three evaluations, competency evaluations, a month for the whole state of South Dakota. And we had to pay transportation costs and sheriff's time to sit with our patients or back and forth or whatever. And it just wasn't a very good system. It's a lot closer for us in Sioux Falls to drive to Yankton than it was for Pennington County or Harding County. So that was one of the things that was brought up in the bill was that the HSC would start funding, would start a fund that would be overseen by the association to distribute those dollars instead of, and so we could do those evaluations here at home. They also changed who could do those evaluations, hoping to drive the cost down to some point. They've expanded the amount of people. So yesterday, our conference call was about working on the administration, the administrative rules on how that we would run that as an office, the competency evaluation repayment. We're working on, you know, the pay, the pay period. I mean, how, how long of a period are we going to look at reimbursement to counties? And we talked about a six-month pay period that we would do two during a year for reimbursement. We discuss how much the administrative rule, our administrative office would get in reimbursement for the work that they'd be doing the first year. It looks like it'll be a little bit of higher repayment cost just because we had to hire a lawyer to put together our, our under, our, our claims sheet and with all the different sections and how we do the reimbursements. We talked about how you would deny them. We talked about what a maximum fee would be for reimbursement and a calculation of how we're going to calculate when these claims come into the association office, how we're, what, what we're going to use so that we make sure it's equitable to all counties, whether you're a big county or a small county. And so we're in the process of doing that. We made some changes yesterday, have sent it back to our lawyer. And he has set out another rough draft, which I don't think I'm going to share at this point because it's just a draft. And the association board will go through that again and then it will be distributed. We did decide that we would send it out to the State's Attorney's Office, the two public defender's offices in the state of South Dakota, and the auditor's office so that they could have some comments or some feedback in some of the things that we've done. Because the auditor's office is the one that's paying those bills in the first place. And we just want to make sure that we're covering all bases. We plan to have this done before the July seventeenth meeting when the Oversight Council Board that I sit on meets for the first time. And so this is hopefully going to be done before them. So there's a whole lot more information. That's kind of it in a nutshell. We had about an hour and twenty-minute conference call yesterday just to talk through some of the stuff that has been worked on already, so.
Thank you for your time and commitment. Commissioner Barth?
Well, I, I have a couple also. For one, I had a meeting with the fire chiefs, their monthly meeting. And the spirit of volunteerism is strong in that group. And they're battling for volunteers, et cetera. Then Gerald and I, yesterday, were at an ambulance governance meeting. And I think we're making progress in that group, working on implementing, implementing our ordinance changes. And lastly, I was going to say, we met last night with the Planning and Zoning Commission and approved a, some ordinance changes which will be coming to this group. And I wonder, Scott, if you would consider just reporting generally on what we're looking at.
Thank you. Scott Anderson, Planning Department. We have been working on some major revisions to our confined animal feeding operation portions of our ordinance for the last eight months. I think we started working on this back in October. We had sort of an ad hoc committee of a couple of planning commissioners, Jeff Barth. And we, I'll turn my phone off, I guess, since I ran down here. We've been working on this at, at the planning commission for several months. And some of the changes that you will be seeing at a public hearing will be, we've, we've updated it, we've added aquaculture. And at one time, there was some discussion. And, and you recently probably heard of the news release that a shrimp farm is going into southern Minnesota. At one time, they were looking at us. But now I think we're prepared that if they ever wanted to expand and you wanted to have some kind of aquaculture activity, we now have that laid out in our ordinance. So I think we're being proactive. We've, we've amended our zoning ordinance that, how we deal with chickens and laying hens. And we were operating under a system of identifying how we deal with waste that the industry no longer uses. So they use sort of a dry system now, and we were using something that our ordinance referred to a wet system, which producers don't use anymore on how they deal with the waste. But there, there are some other changes that we're dealing with. We, we, as a planning department, we did reach out to many producers. We provided the information, trying to get the word out. We had a couple of people that were interested, that were at the meeting last night, didn't speak, but were there to listen to the presentation that we made. We will be, we will be bringing this to you on August eighth. But next, at the, at your next meeting on, so, July eleventh, we will be coming for, before you to set the hearing date for the public hearing on July, on August eighth. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. But we've been making some really good strides to updating our ordinance on how we deal with confined animal feeding operations.
Commissioner Hybarger?
I'm, I'm really glad you're updating them. I know they've, we've had a few that have come in and it's just nice to know that we're ahead of the game instead of dealing with it here. One thing that I mentioned to Jeff, Jeff and I talked about a little bit this morning, is that I hope that you were using data when we're deciding, or not data, but yep, data, when you were deciding what the setbacks would be. Because as things have changed technologically, the setbacks probably don't have to be as, as large as they were before. You can drive closer to a confinement now and not smell anything. And I think there's enough information out there that should help us that we can, by research, say, look, our setbacks are appropriate and we can be closer, need to be farther away just by what's out there.
Exactly. And we have used a lot of that information and research when we compiled and how we came up with the setbacks or the proposed setbacks. And that's certainly one of the, one of the, one of the items that was hotly discussed at our planning commission. And, and at depth, we, we talked a lot about setbacks and what we do to, how, what we do to manage those setbacks. And it's, you know, the last time that the, our zoning ordinance was updated to deal with animal, confined animal feeding operations was in nineteen ninety-eight. So that tells you, I mean, it's been twenty years. A lot of things have changed. There's been a lot of techno- technological changes in the last twenty years. So it was prudent to look at them, update them, and hopefully we move ourselves ahead. We move ourselves forward because the population, the density is only going to increase over the next twenty years. And I think that there's going to be increased pressure for making these uses meld together. I mean, you're, they, we are going to have conflicting land uses. That's, that's a given. I just think that we need to be fair with how we treat both the existing property owners and the, the ag producers. And so there's always going to be some discussion there. I'm hoping that we are moving ahead and we'll have a public hearing. I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I think we really produced a really good product, but that's not to say that you may not see other changes that are needed. And that's certainly how this process works. I mean, so if you see something, we'll get it to you early. We were setting the meeting out long enough that it will have plenty of time to review it. But if there are other changes, we certainly can discuss those and make those if you need them.
Commissioner Kersky?
Just want to echo Commissioner Hybarger. I'm glad to see we're being proactive versus reactive. And I know at this time, under the current system, we basically have an indefinite setback. I mean.
That's correct.
So.
It's bigger and bigger and bigger.
Yeah, exactly. So I'm glad to hear that we're addressing that. What about conditional use permitting process? Are we looking at that also?
We, that was part of our revisions that we, we looked at. We, there's a few changes to our conditional use permits and how we deal with confined animal feeding operations within the conditional use permit process. Primarily, the confined animal feeding operation is addressed in Article Twelve. That's our additional use regulations. It, and talks about at, if, if, when a conditional use permit is needed. We did make some tweaks on how long a conditional use permit will stay valid before they start work on, on a project. That was one of the items that we discussed. It was relatively short before. We've increased that from one year to two year for all conditional use permits. Because you have many projects, large projects, like, let's say, the Agronomy Center, where, you know, it takes, there's more than a year of construction. So by the time you get it bid, planned, and then start construction, we were really bumping into that one-year timeframe. So we, we looked at how, so this sort of bled over into, onto some other issues that we had been working with as well, so. But I'm really excited about the aquaculture because I think that's something that we're going to see more of in the future. And now we have something in place that spells out how it is going to be used and operated in this county.
Commissioner Bender?
I'm curious what, how the process works and to the extent have, have stakeholders, have the public had an opportunity to give input in this process as you've been drafting these?
Well, the process, we, we, like, as I indicated, we had sort of an ad hoc committee of planning commissioners and, and Commissioner Barth and staff. And we did reach out to, to, like, Ag United. We let them know, major producers, we let, we let people know. But primarily, we, we utilized the system that is in place. And we had a public hearing, we advertised it and had a public hearing at the planning commission. And I certainly hope that people are watching this now. We'll continue to get the word out. But we do have the ordinance in our office. Someone wants to, you know, review it, we, we have it there for people to look at. And we have been handing it out to people that have come into our office. Ag producers will, I'll discuss it. We'll say, hey, did you know that we're amending the ordinance? They're very interested. I said, this is the hearing, these are the dates. Here's the, take the ordinance home with you, read it over. If you have questions, let me know. So we have been reaching out.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hybarger?
I just have one more comment back to the setbacks. And I'm just glad to hear that we're using data and research to support our decisions just because, and when it comes to us, we as commissioners or whoever is here can go back to that and say, we have the data, we have the research to justify this. And it's not just us making a decision because that's what feels good. And I think that that's a huge step for us to have something to stand on.
Commissioner Barth?
Just in regards to Commissioner Bender's question. It's been on the agenda of the planning commission probably six times. So, you know, people have an opportunity to come then and speak to the commission. In practice, we've had not very many people come in. But we were ready and, you know, it was open at all our planning commission meetings. And it's on the agenda, you know, revised ordinance, whatever. And, you know, and we, we've revised it at these meetings too. You know, we throw something out and add something in. So we have extended a hand to folks, but we'll see where it goes. And again, we want to be proactive, not reactive.
Other questions? Thank you, Scott. Any other liaison reports? Commissioner Bender?
Commissioner Hybarger, she's obviously been a very busy woman. She and I attended a meeting last Thursday of local government representatives, city of Sioux Falls, other local municipalities, Lincoln County and Minnehaha County, to try to refine ideas of legislation that we could bring forward as a group, and I think we've got a, a good list of 10 different items right now, and we're going to further refine that in one last meeting, and then we'll bring it back here for your review.
Commissioner Kurski?
Met yesterday with DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent, and talked a lot about funding and some of the highs and lows and what's, where the money is coming from and what's changed and that type of thing. And also, he's worked, been working real hard and working with Kerry Dever in HR on a new organizational chart. He's, he has a few openings due to retirements and resignations and that type of thing, so looking at, really took a deep dive into how can he redo his organization for the best functionality, so we'll be seeing more in that.
Any other liaison reports?
Do you have anything, Mr. Chair?
I was on vacation. I don't. I have trouble with just common English, so I'm not going to those meetings. I just want to remind everybody that today, we have a county budget hearing at 1 o'clock. At 5 o'clock, we have the joint city-county meeting. Tomorrow, at 1 o'clock, we have a county budget hearing again. Obviously, next Tuesday is the 4th of July, so we will not be meeting, and then again, on Thursday, the 6th, we have 11 o'clock special commission meeting, so clear your calendars. Any new business besides that information? Commissioner Hybarger added to her resume, so to speak. She has the second-best job in the world in becoming a grandmother for twin boys, so that's pretty exciting. Keeping you busy won't be a problem. Any old business? With that, we need to go into exec session for contract personnel and litigation.
That's my motion.
Second.
And a second to go into contract personnel and litigation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. We'll see you back here in about 10 minutes so I can sign some documents. Thank you.